Are we ready? All right, Dan, you're ready? All right. I will call the Village Board of Oregon, meeting to order for Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Candy, roll call, please.
Bilo?
Here.
Valley?
Here.
Glush?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stitch?
Here.
Wunsch?
Here.
Inversion is absent.
All right, terrific. All right, let's go to number three, which is approval of the November first, two thousand and twenty-one Village Board Meeting Minutes, was in your packet. I'll take a motion in a second from Derek and Amanda. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agreed. Okay. Number four, public appearances. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody here for that? Okay, not seen anyone. We'll go to five, which is proclamations and announcements, five A. As we always have in our packet, we have the upcoming meeting and events. Put stuff in your calendar for that. Six, we'll go to six, which is reports of village officers. Martin has his memo. I don't know if anybody's got any questions for Martin on his, he's pretty thorough. Otherwise, we can go to five B. We can also ask, see if anybody's got anything for Elise, planning and zoning, report in the packet as well. Anybody got anything for either of those? Seen none? All right, we'll go to six C, which is village department head, staff or consultant comments. And chief, get your hand raised.
Yeah, if anybody wants to go before me, I have quite a bit to say, so I'd offer anyone else to go first. No?
Looks like not, chief, go ahead.
Okay. Talk about a few things, update the village board on. The first, and I'm sure many of you are aware, on Monday, November eighth, we had a shooting in the village of Oregon. Just to keep everyone in the loop, I did do a press release, and if you want it, I can certainly send it to you. But then later today, I did send an update regarding the case and a press release, and I just wanted to briefly read it. The Oregon Police Department's investigation into a shooting that occurred at five fifty-five South Perry Parkway on November eighth has determined that a twenty-eight-year-old male from Oregon, Wisconsin, shot the female in the apartment and then shot himself. The man has since succumbed to his injuries at a local hospital. The female victim, age twenty-nine, of Oregon, was hospitalized but has since been released. The Oregon Police Department extends our deepest sympathy to the friends and family members suffering from this terrible tragedy. The man also shot and killed a dog belonging to the female, and animal control officer safely removed another small dog from the home on Monday afternoon. Just to add to that, I can't specifically talk about the case because it's still under investigation. It's obviously a very complex case. But what I will say is, I was on scene for most of the call, and I watched as our officers risked their lives to get that woman safely out of the apartment and then try to end that situation as safely as possible. I can't comment enough on how brave they were, how well their training kicked in, and how well they performed. I think not only did they do me proud, but they did this community proud with their actions, and I want to thank them for that. Unfortunately, one of our officers did sustain minor injury, and we're hoping to get him back very shortly. I guess before I move on to the next topic, does anybody have any questions about that particular incident that I can try to address?
I just have a comment. I think it's a testimony to your department and yourself that that situation was able to be handled by our staff without being escalated beyond the sad occurrences that happened that day. So that's really what I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did, as part of the after-action debrief, we look at a lot of different things, training, equipment. We have identified some things we'd like to improve, so I will be planning on in the near future bringing those things to you to see if we can't get that equipment to keep our officers even that more safe. The second issue is a Facebook post. Thursday last week, I just want to provide some context first. A Facebook post was put out there regarding a website that exists that contains photographs on it that were used in what I would quote as inappropriate ways, and that's what was put on this Facebook post. I don't know who this person is that put this Facebook post out there, but it's on the Oregon Information Page. There was some conversation over Facebook regarding the original post, and I've received an email from trustee Bilo advising, he thinks it would be important to address the community to stop the spread of misinformation that is currently happening all over the village. And I believe it was yesterday, I received an email from trustee Peterson asking if I would consider making a statement regarding what's kind of evolved at tonight's meeting. To be clear, I can't discuss the specifics of this case. Not only does it involve juveniles, but it's active. And it is very unfortunate that what has happened on Facebook regarding this matter has unfolded. Victims in cases, especially like ones that involve these sort of things, these victims go through a lot. And, you know, I've thought a lot about this over the weekend as people reached out, and, you know, I and the rest of my staff do everything we can to protect victims. That is number one, because not only do we want to help them move forward, but we also want to set a good example so that any of these victims, if they're ever victimized again, or if others watching, something happens to them, they know that they can count on us. So as I move forward with what I have to say, I don't in any way want to put these victims out any more than they already have. So I'm going to use myself as an example. When I was young, I went through something similar to this, not exact, but similar. And I'll tell you how I felt. I felt hurt, ashamed, embarrassed. But then when I returned to that environment where that happened, all I could think was, looking around at the people around me, was, do they know? What are they going to think about me? Are they going to think I did something wrong to this person, or that I did something that would cause somebody else to do this to me? I could not imagine what I went through unfolding on Facebook the way it did. In my opinion, our community's better than that. I, on behalf of everybody that's posted on Facebook about this, apologize to these victims, and I want to assure them that they've done nothing wrong. And if somebody who is now a police chief could have gone through that, they've done nothing wrong, and they have nothing to be ashamed of, and I will stand right next to them every single time. It turned my stomach to see as this unfolded on Facebook, that people were actually encouraged to go to the website. Imagine being in the shoes of those victims and feeling that. That's just not right. And speaking specifically about this Oregon page, whether it was intentional or not, I get it. We as a society, we live on Facebook now. We want to be interested in things. We want to know what's going on in our community. But I hope that this serves as an opportunity to learn from what we've done, and when we see information out there, we're careful in how we respond. We are careful of how this may impact others. If you're ever concerned about what the police department is doing, or what the school is doing, there are ways in which you can report those concerns. If you are concerned about the police department, you can come to me. If you feel that I can't handle that issue properly, you can come to the village board. You can come to Martin. But to bring all those issues on Facebook is just not right. If you're not happy with the school district, you can go to the school board. You can go to the, to Dr. Bergstrom. She'd be happy to address those issues. People ask me why I did not put out a press release about this, and what unfolded in this Facebook is the exact reason why. If this was reported to us, and we put out their information about it, people are human. What are they going to do? If I don't give him them more information, they're going to go seek it from somewhere else. And the last thing I wanted to do was have anybody look for this website. There is no perfect decision to make in these situations. I let my character and my morals guide me through the decisions I make. And if you ever wonder why I don't do a press release, why I don't verify we're working on a case, that is because I am trying to do the right thing. I'm trying to protect victims, trying to protect cases. I put myself out there and provide myself as an example, not to make this about me, but rather to take the limelight off of any victim out there. Again, I hope moving forward that we can be more careful and understand that our participation with information put on Facebook could have a very negative impact for those involved. One of the thoughts out there, and I even thought it at first, but again, I've put a lot of thought into what we can do moving forward. I thought about, can we provide information to the board and to the community about cybercrime, and the challenges, and the legalities, and the jurisdictional issues? There's two sides to that coin. Yes, we can educate our community that cares and wants to know more, but the negative end of it is we're going to teach people that prey on our community on how to do it in a way that law enforcement can't combat. So I don't know how we can present that information. I'm trying to work with the Department of Justice to see if there's a way. If we can do it in a way that doesn't cause further damage, we will. But we just have to be very cautious. I'm happy to take any questions, and we'll certainly try to answer what I can.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, chief, and I think it's great if we can put something together going forward to cover some of these things without, like you say, kind of overstepping. Just kind of from what I've seen, I think the community just wants to know that there was some sort of process in place and that these processes are being followed. So I appreciate your statements tonight and just following up with that. Thank you.
Yeah, and to add to your comment, Derek, it's, I want to be as transparent as humanly possible, but even if I put out a statement that says, we're working on something, it could unintentionally imply that that Facebook post has any validity, and that's unfair to those victims.
Anybody else? Chief, thank you. Anything else from you, chief?
Okay, Jennifer, Rachel, anything? Okay. All right, we can go to 6D, which is Village Board, comments. I'll just sort of make a comment. It's kind of a fun thing. I did bring us a little treat for hopefully after we pass the budget, or you can eat it before, I don't care. But it's always good when we pass the budget, so.
Thank you.
Enjoy that. So anybody else in the board have any comments? Okay. All right, we'll go to 7, Communication Miscellaneous Business. Approval of the vouchers in front of us. It looks like we have $518,276.31. If we can get a motion in a second, we can open it up for discussion.
I'll move those for discussion.
All right. Mike, does he have your hand too? Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Questions? Lisa is here, and others are here.
I have questions.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, and they're mostly informational. I'm not questioning whether they're valid charges or not. I just like a little more information on number 3105, General Communications, Custom Pro Laser 4.
That would be, uh, Custom Pro Laser 4 would be a laser handheld radar unit.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief. 5339, Marco Inc., install camera in overflow.
Yes, that'd be me, too. So we have cameras stationed throughout the PD. We do have one. We have two different evidence rooms. One is indoor, and one is what we call the overflow, but it's in the garage. It's another very secure area. We didn't have cameras in there before, and I wanted one in there ASAP.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
When I read the word overflow, I thought of maybe it was at the sewer plant or something like that. 8,000, Staley Plumbing, and it looks like a bunch of, looks like an HVAC repair that was spread amongst several departments.
Actually, that's a lot of HVAC repair for the same department. We had a series of HVAC problems and water leaks over the summer, so on multiple units. We have four, at least four residential units. We had significant water leaks and damage in all sorts of different parts in different units. Those leaks have been resolved, but we kind of got the cumulative bills of all those problems all at once.
It's all taken care of?
It is for now, anyway.
Good. Did it ruin any of the infrastructure at all?
I'm sorry?
The leaks, did it ruin any of the building itself?
We had some damage to library materials. The building, the public works was really helpful and helped us clean up with wetback some of the water on the floor. We had our annual carpet cleaning that helped with some of the water damage in one of the offices, so we're okay. None of the drywall was damaged. It was all on cement or carpet or library materials.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. I'm glad I asked, because if I had to guess on those things I just asked about, I'd have been so wrong. That's all I have.
All right. Yeah, Mike's got something.
Yeah, what's UB refunds? Any idea?
Those are utility billing refunds.
Oh, okay.
So if somebody moves out and there is an overpayment, we send the check to the person that moved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion in a second. Candy, it looks like we're ready for a voice vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fawley?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We are on 2, 7B, which is minutes from the October 12, 2021 Library Board. Informational only, was in your packet. I don't, anybody have any questions for Jennifer? I don't, Jennifer, you don't?
Yeah, those are just included every, all our minutes are included in your packet just as an informational item, so I don't have anything in particular at this time.
Okay. All right, we can go on to C, which is notification Officer Cody, Cole, is it Kohler? Keller. Regarding selection of military pay option, leave pay option selected. Informational only, in the packet. I don't think, Chief, we need to say anything on that. D is nomination of Eric Smith back by me to the Planning Commission to serve unexpired term vacated by Mike Severson. Just a little background, Eric actually has been an alternate for seven years. So typically, that's kind of what we do. I think he's deserved his time to sort of move up. If you don't know, sometimes when alternates cannot vote if everybody else from the commission is there, so this will allow Eric to be a regular voting member of the Planning Commission. So I don't think, we don't need to vote? We do? Okay. All right, so we need a motion in a second on nomination of Eric. Mike?
Yeah.
And Derek? Okay, any discussion? So just also just, so the alternate position will be coming up, and we'll take applications, and we'll try to fill that. Yeah.
Just a quick question. Do you know how long Mark served on?
I think, I want to say, I think 2014. Is that the six in my head?
Yeah.
Is that right? Yeah. Long time. All right, so we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then we're on to E, which is the Ready Set Class B Combo Liquor License. I will open the public hearing. Do we want Matthew to come up, say anything, or?
Ken?
Yeah. Matthew, do you want to, maybe you can give us the updated information? People are dying to know about that.
Okay, good. Hey, this is what I look like, so if you see me on the street without a mask.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Matt Stebbins. We've been working on the project, geez, it seems like for almost over a year now, on the square here. And we're just excited to bring our brand of hospitality and high design and casual approach to this community. We're really excited. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm a third-generation restaurateur, so I've been through this process a few times. I've talked to a few people that are part of this board already, and I just really look forward to, you know, adding ourselves to part of this community.
Okay. So we want to open it up to any public comments that anybody might have in the audience on this. Liquor license for Ready Set. Not seen anybody. I think I can close. I'll close the public hearing. And then we're on to consideration and potential action by the village board. Now Candy tells me that in our motion for approve or not, we need to make it for Yours and Ours LLC. And then the agent is you, Matthew.
Correct.
Correct? So we want to make sure that's part of the motion. So if we are so inclined to have a motion in a second to approve this for them? Anybody? Amanda?
Sure, we're going to discuss.
We are. Yep, let's get the motion in a second. Okay, so Amanda and Derek? All right, questions? Discussion?
Yeah, I just, there was a lot on the floor plan. It wasn't always clear where things were. I wonder if you could just walk me through it a little bit?
Sure.
Because there was, there were two of them. There was like an upper and a lower, and it didn't, I couldn't figure out quite how they lined up, and I just.
You know, yeah, I believe that. Let me just scroll through mine here, and I, you know, I think we omitted the other... All right, no, they're both here. So what's your specific question, and I'll walk you through it?
Well, first of all, there's, looks like there's like three or four different staircases on there. I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I apologize. These are the set plans for the construction. I didn't pay to have these done just for this, so it's a little more in depth. So there's a front entrance there, and that's actually, that was originally got approved. We worked with Elise to get it moved, but we decided to keep the integrity. So that's actually going to be where it still is in the center. Now, there's a stairway right there that goes down into the basement, and then, and those aren't, so those aren't public, those are just for employees. So that, the only public walkway downstairs is that one there, where the arrow is now. And then there's back stairs that also access the prep kitchen in the basement. So the only, the only public traffic is that main set of stairs right there, the widest set.
So Matthew, can I just ask you?
Yeah.
The stairs to the left that you were pointing, initially pointing, that wall's been opened up, is that right?
No, no, no. So that's still a solid wall.
Oh, it is.
There's a door there that will be shut.
Okay.
You know, from a traffic flow perspective, I don't actually know how much that will get used at all anymore.
Okay.
That'll probably shut and close. That's going to be a high-traffic area from our main entrance into the dining room, kind of, I say, the north of this picture. So I doubt that that will get used much at all, honestly. And because we have, there's no shortage of space there, so I don't anticipate that through the service, through service, that we're going to actually have to utilize that just even for employees for grabbing inventory just because of what we have available behind the bars that we're going to utilize.
Okay, thank you. Anybody other?
Okay, yeah.
Amanda, I can walk you through. So the stairs on the left of the picture here are the ones that I was just talking about that are just for employees going down, and then those enter into, and that's, sorry, it's not to scale. I did, this one I did myself. The ones that are kind of in the middle of the picture up to the top, those are the public stairs going down into the downstairs dining as well. And then there are stairs that I apologize, I didn't actually add on in the back of the prep kitchen there. And those are, the only public space in the basement is that downstairs dining and bathroom there.
Okay.
And then there is a locked storage, like liquor storage room there on the bottom-left corner of that space.
Okay. Yeah, that clarifies things. I couldn't quite line up the stairs.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't have the architects draw the basement.
I just wanted to verify that.
Because we weren't doing anything down there.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So Matthew, I'm on HPC, so I know that you had to, you have custom windows being made.
Correct.
And the million-dollar question that people want to know is, when are you going to open up?
That is still a million-dollar question. No, what we're hoping for with construction is, I would say this, we're still shooting for, I'm trying to keep the gang all in line with the second week of December.
Okay.
What's going to happen is, is those custom windows aren't going to come until January, but we've already, we're going to put temporary glazing on for the time being just to be able to get open. And so far with the construction and the contractors and, you know, the lead times for equipment has just in probably every professional field here has been very ridiculous. But we're in good shape that we'll be, we'll be in charge of our own destiny there. All the equipment and the construction should be done by the first week of December, and so if we can kind of put those final touches on, it'll be that second week.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, this is probably just a technicality, but on the first page, it looks like it says Yours and Ours LLC.
It should say Ours.
I just wanted to clarify before we approve it that it says the right business name.
It should be Yours and Ours LLC, correct?
I did, you know, I filled out so many papers. It is Yours and Ours, yes.
Okay, yeah, we want to make sure that we approve the right one.
Yeah, I want that accurate, that's all.
Please.
Yeah, on the application, it's Yours and Ours.
Okay, all right.
That's the application. Okay, got it.
I also liked this part right here.
Pirates, yeah.
Yeah, pirates will be asked to leave.
Oh, was that on the alcohol?
Yes.
Oh, you know, sometimes when we're doing drafts of this, we have a little fun.
Yeah.
I apologize for that. I'm sure that's called checked.
It is, exactly. I loved it, though.
Randy, can I also, can I also mention?
Yes.
You'll see in the packet, Joey's done a very good job of compiling all the stuff she needed to for this license. But the fire and building inspector have reports in there as well, so before we issue the license, the lawyer will be sent to the attorney.
Okay.
The fire code and also the building inspection, yeah.
All right. So we do have a motion in a second. Let me just sort of read what the, I think the motion should be. So we're approving a Class B Combo Liquor License for Yours and Ours LLC, and the appointing agent will be Matthew Stebbins. So I think we had a motion in a second, just want to make sure you guys are okay with what I just said. Okay?
And it's contingent upon those.
The, yes.
The, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Matthew, we look forward.
Thanks so much, you guys. Appreciate it.
Randy, you have a quick question?
Yeah.
Just for Matthew. So just so that, because I anticipate phone calls and stuff, the glazing that we're putting in will be temporary only, and that the actual windows and everything that was approved by HPC will be done in January when those come in.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just want to, that's what I thought.
Yeah, good.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know some people are very hyper-aware of some of that stuff.
Yeah, you know, it's going to be the most expensive month of windows that we have, but I thought it was necessary to, just we're really excited to get this project going.
Yeah, I agree. Agreed. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. And Jeff, thanks for the clarification. Okay. All right, we're on to 7F. Ready? Release a letter of credit to $0 for Highlands of Netherwood, Phase 1A. Staff is recommending approval of that motion. Anybody want to make a motion in a second? All right, so we have Luke, as I saw Mike's hand. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We're on to G, 2022 Annual Service Contract with Drug and Alcohol Testing, 24/7 LLC. Staff is recommending that we approve this as well. Anybody? Derek?
Yes.
Can we give a second? Luke? Any discussion? Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike's got a question.
So this is pay-as-you-go in terms of how much of this we use is kind of?
Well, yeah, I mean, this, we sign up for a certain annual contract, which is the, I believe, $250 annual fee plus the testing charges and anything else that we have to send our individuals in for.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carrie's? Uh, let's see, 7, 7H. Now, this doesn't happen very often, Jeff, right?
Well...
All right, let me read it. Change, Jordan, number one for the wastewater treatment plant blower upgrade project to deduct $2,746.07. Staff is recommending approval.
Gee, I don't know.
I know, that's a tough one, isn't it? Can we get a motion in a second? They got one from Derek and Amanda? Any questions for Jeff, for comments, jokes, or no?
No.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. On to 7I, which is Acceptance Street Improvements, On-Site Storm Sewer Sidewalks, Curb and Gutter for Autumn Ridge Phase 1C Development. Staff is recommending approval of this as well. Information was in our packet. All right, Derek is making a motion. Can we get a second? Amanda? Any questions or discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
7J is request by Officer Kevin Thompson to waive repayment of $1,988 under the terms of the five-year repayment agreement. Staff is recommending that we deny this request. Chief, I don't know if you want to say a quick sentence, or?
Um, I, you know, the memo outlines what I have to say and my recommendation, and I did include Kevin's letter to you as well, asking why he's, would like this waived.
Okay. All right, so the recommended motion from staff is to deny the request to waive the repayment. Anybody want to make, Jerry? Motion? Okay, second, from Derek. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of denying the request? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
And then seven K is unwanted prescription drug collection grant, contract between the City of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, and Village of Oregon Police Department. Staff recommendation is to approve this. Anybody wanna make a motion? Second, Luke? First? Derek? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, Mike?
Clarifying, is this more, for more than just drugs, I saw some reference in here to pesticides.
For, no, we do not do pesticides, um, this can be, uh, over-the-counter drugs, narcotics, and, um, DOJ kinda goes back and forth on accepting vape-type devices, but we'll take them. Um, if the community wants to get rid of them, we'll help, uh, and if we have to destroy those on our own, we will. Uh, they get difficult though, because they, some of them have batteries in them, um, but yeah, this is more medications.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Alright, we're on to seven, uh, L, which is resolution number twenty-one fifty-three, a commitment of affordable housing funds for North Point Development totaling one, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff recommendation is to approve, we had a discussion on this last time, board meeting. Anybody? Who's waiting a motion in a second to approve? Amanda and Derek? Discussion? Okay, pretty straightforward. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, seven M, Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Relief Application on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Dane County. Kai Court Development Project located near seven, seven six nine Janesville Street. Is that just a intro? You wanna do?
Yep, so, you wanna take up the first one?
Yeah, let's do it. Alright, we'll take I, uh, M I. Resolution number twenty-one fifty, resolution to adopt citizen participation plan related to the village's participation in the CDGB program. Staff recommendation is to approve this resolution. Amanda and Derek? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, then we're on M two, which is Citizen Participation Public Hearing. Um, we need, so we're, we're gonna, uh, open the public hearing for this, and I think Mark is gonna come up and do a little presentation for us on this.
Good evening, my name is Mark Stewart, and I am with Veerbecker Associates. Um, I'm in the Reedsburg office, and, uh, we do have an office in Madison, we have an office in Milwaukee, and then we also have an office in Prairie de Sheen, which is made up of actually just one person in, in that office, so. Um, thank you for your time today, and thank you for giving me the chance to, uh, discuss the project with you. Um, the Community Development Block Grant Program is through the, uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level. And, interestingly enough, the Village of Oregon and Dane County do not qualify for CDBG programs because, uh, they are defined as a different level. First off, the village is not, um, an LMI community, and, uh, the county has been designated as an urban county, and so it qualifies for funding through a different, through a different, uh, mechanism. However, after the floods of twenty eighteen, um, the state, in their application for CDBG funds, they requested disaster recovery dollars. And with that program, uh, they call it disaster, uh, recovery, um, they were able to set aside monies for two counties, Dane County and Vernon County, cause those were the two hardest-hit counties, um, in twenty eighteen. So, that puts any community in Dane County eligible for this disaster recovery money. The target and purpose of the disaster recovery money was for, uh, housing. And it was for the loss of housing and, and to replace that housing, that's what, uh, that funding mechanism was for, and, uh, that's what brings us here today. And as part of the process, I will go through and discuss what, uh, what programs are available in the, uh, CDBG world, and then, uh, we'll get into the project at hand, so, um, just so you're aware, as you, uh, may attend other, uh, organizations, uh, Leg Wisconsin Municipalities or Counties Association, things like that, uh, they'll talk about, uh, Community Development Block Grant Programs. And so, programs that are available to communities, um, include the Small Cities, uh, program, which involves, um, the Public Facilities Program, which is a program, uh, designed for, uh, public works departments and public works activities. Um, those carry a maximum one million dollar grant option, and that's a two-thirds cost, um, of the project. So, for instance, if you have, if a community had a one point five million dollar project, the CDBG would award up to a million dollars, and the community have to come up with five hundred thousand in regards to that. But stepping back, uh, the HUD guidelines for CDBG programs is low to moderate income persons. Um, that's the first part, so that is fifty-one percent is a low to moderate income benefit. Um, and that's based on, um, uh, income in the county, so every county's gonna have a different income limit that falls into the low to moderate income level, as well as for rental options as well. Uh, second, uh, objective at the national level is slum and blight removal, so there's a lot of communities that will use CDBG funds to, uh, to remove blight in, uh, their communities. And then a local urgent need, so the disaster recovery is a local urgent need. And in this case, they've defined the two counties of Vernon and Dane County as local urgent needs. Uh, one of the programs involved in the CDBG program is housing, um, approximately seven million dollars is available for regional housing applications. Um, and then approximately five hundred thousand is available for non-regional housing applications. And with all these programs, most of them have deadlines in the next coming year, in like May of twenty twenty-two. In the community development programs, there is, uh, Public Facilities for Economic Development, and what that is, is, um, it's public facilities, so you're doing a sewer water street-type project, but it's benefiting an economic indicator, so maybe a, uh, uh, manufacturing facilities coming in, and they're gonna create twenty jobs, and so based on the number of jobs is the number of, or is, equals the dollar amount that the CDBG program will participate up to. Um, CDBG planning, so a lot of times, communities will go through a planning process in order to, uh, set them up for the next stage, which could be, um, public facilities, which could be housing, which could be emergency assistance. So, in that planning phase, um, they'll award up to twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for a, a single project for planning purposes, or up to fifty thousand if it's a community-wide type plan that is gonna be developed through that process. CDBG also has emergency assistance program funds, and that's to, uh, assist local units of government in addressing emergency housing, um, public facility, infrastructure, and business assistance that were a result of a natural or man-made disaster. Um, so for instance, let's go back to twenty eighteen, and not many people wanna rehash the, the floods of that year, cause it was pretty tremendous. But, uh, the Village of Rock Springs in Sauk County, um, is actually at the low point of the Baraboo River, uh, between, uh, Elroy and Lake Wisconsin, or, or in Portage, and, uh, what happens is the water tends to stand, and so they've been hit, they've been devastated by floodwaters for decades. And recently, they qualified for the EAP, um, the Emergency Assistance Program, and they were able to use those funds to move their, uh, Village Hall out of the floodplain, move their library out of the floodplain, um, and then in, move their fire station, all three entities out of the floodplain to higher ground using, um, the Emergency Assistance, uh, Program Dollars, so it's, it's very functional, it's, it's good. Uh, money used for a bad action that, that took place, so, um, there are positives with that. But then that brings us to, uh, a couple more here, the Disaster Recovery Program, uh, which we're gonna discuss here shortly, but, uh, there's also an Economic Development Program, um, that funds, uh, they, they start with about six million dollars, um, in the, the fund right now, and it's for projects, economic development projects that benefit low to moderate income persons directly, and it's also a, uh, employment-driven process. So, if, depending on, um, the type of project it is, and the number of employees that it's gonna create as a full-time equivalent, there's about ten thousand dollars per employee available in that program, and that's a fifty-fifty type grant. Another grant, uh, to mention is, uh, the Department of Administration, uh, Decker Division of Housing, they have, uh, coronavirus funding, so it's, uh, CDBGCV, if you see it anywhere, but it's coronavirus. They, they were awarded sixteen million dollars from HUD to use money towards coronavirus. The state has only used ten percent of that money for projects. No one had any projects coming out the gate ready for it. So, in our state, only ten percent of those funds have been expended. Nationally, nineteen percent of the coronavirus funds through the CDBG program have been expended. Um, so, a- at the recent, recent Leg Wisconsin Municipalities Conference, uh, we talked with Dave Polish, who's the Division, uh, Head, uh, of the department, he stated that they have expanded its purpose. And the purpose of the coronavirus funding was to directly impact, uh, the deficiencies in response to, uh, the coronavirus pandemic, but now they've expanded it, so parks and shelters and outdoor recreation have now been opened up to it. So, that one, the community, that is not community-driven as far as low to moderate income, um, or that you're in Dane County. So, the Village of Oregon would be eligible for coronavirus funding, and so if you have projects out there, that is one, and it's an ongoing application, there's not a deadline for it, the deadline is when the money's gone, the money's gone, but they're itching to get it out. Um, because what happens is if the state doesn't put out the money, then the federal government takes it back away, and so they wanna use it. So, if, if Elise and Martin have any projects, that's a good one, um, for any of the parks and recreational activities of the community. Um, the disaster recovery money, the states, uh, received fifteen point three million dollars, um, to assist communities who lost housing. And like I stated, uh, Vernon County, Dane County are the two hardest-hit, and hundred percent of the funds are going to those two counties, okay? And what it is, it's for, in essence, shovel-ready housing projects, and so they could be apartments, they could be single-family, they could be some sort of development, um, that is gonna target low to moderate income people, and it's gonna create new housing units, and even though, uh, Oregon didn't directly have a major impact by the floods, Dane County did, and because of that, uh, Oregon qualifies for these funds. And, uh, um, the funds can be used, are to be used to offset the cost of the housing project, to bring it down to an affordable level. So, let's say, um, and, and it's different for every, in the two counties, um, and at the onset, this is the second round of funding. The first round of funding, they, they had eighty percent of the funds go to Dane County and Vernon County, and twenty percent to other areas impacted by the twenty eighteen floods. And in that case, the Village of Rock Springs received disaster recovery funding, um, on, on round one, as did a few other communities in, um, Vernon County. Dane County, I think only one application was received out of Dane County, and it wasn't funded, um, in the end, because the project didn't come together. So, it opens up that there's still all this money available, and, uh, with Habitat for Humanity, um, having a project in Kai Court, the intent is to bring the funds down, so let's say, um, if apartments are going for fifteen hundred dollars a month, but the affordable level is a thousand dollars a month, or eight hundred dollars a month, what have you, there's a gap in building that apartment complex. And so that's what these funds are to do, is to make them more affordable to the developer so that they can rent or sell these properties to people that meet the low to moderate income requirements. Um, and so in this case, with the project at hand, um, the, uh, the community has set aside some money to help with the project. Um, the project is gonna be, including infrastructure, will be about a two point six million dollar project, and the grant request will be about just over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, to bring that affordability cost down to where, um, it kinda meets into the requirements of, um, of the state and the program. Uh, we have participated in several applications, and a few of our clients had, um, others participate and write applications. And so that affordability level, um, for Rock Springs when they did it, they were right around, uh, sixty thousand dollars per unit is what the state funded. And over in Vernon County, in Viola, they actually funded at eighty-nine thousand dollars per unit. And that's, be, there's a difference in access to materials, um, access to, um, developers, and those costs that have changed, you know, throughout time, and in the last year, Rock Springs actually received an additional two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for their units, um, which is, I guess that'd be another, um, over ten thousand dollars per unit, so that drives their costs up to about eighty thousand per unit that the state is helping to fund through this program. And if, uh, I did my math right, I think it's about seventy-five thousand, I think, Steve, do you remember? It's about seventy-five thousand dollars per unit, um, is our request, uh, to the state when we actually put this application together. And the application deadline is, uh, this Friday, the nineteenth, at four P M, so. I'll stop talking, I like to talk, so, I apologize.
Alright. So, Mark, did you go, go through every, your whole list?
I sure did, yes.
Okay, so, the, the public hearing is still open, so we wanna make sure if there's anybody from the public that wants to comment or, uh, ask questions, we wanna make sure that they have that opportunity. Anybody here need to, wanna do that, otherwise we'll close the public hearing, if not. Um, and I will do that, and then I guess we can open it up for Village Board Members, if we have questions for Mark. Anybody? I'm not seeing any, so we can, we can, you want us to take the three, the resolution? Alright, so we can move to the resolution in our agenda, uh, three is resolution number twenty-one fifty, twenty-one fifty-one, resolution to adopt policy to prohibit the use of excessive force in the barring of entrances, exits for non-violent civil rights demonstrations, and I'm assuming, Martin, this is just sort of one of the requirements for getting the funding, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's right, the, we have to demonstrate consistency with the federal requirements. Um, in our case, our policies at the police department are accredited, and so we need all, uh, federal and state laws, so we're good there.
So, we need to have this on, on the books, so. Anybody wanna make a motion in a second to approve? Amanda, and then, uh, I'll take Mike? Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay? And then four is development, right, Martin, you want me to keep going? Development agreement between the Village of Oregon Habitat for Humanity of Dane County, including the provision of a hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and twenty in funds from the Village Affordable Housing Fund Two, again, we talked about this last, at our last board meeting, so I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve that, Jerry's got a motion, and Mike, is it, I'm sorry. I'm looking for a second, alright, we'll take Derek? Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Um, do I read this correct, that if the CDBG grant doesn't come through, then the village doesn't provide the hundred and eighty thousand some dollars of money?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and, and if necessary, we could revisit that, if they don't get it.
Alright, Jerry has a hand up?
Actually, I was gonna ask a question similar to that, but Mike is thinking like I am thinking now. Um, so, there will be no cost to the village residents in approving this, is that right?
Right, this is money coming out of the Affordable Housing Fund, yep.
And what will be the balance left in that fund?
Um, between, uh, this project and the North Point project, about ten thousand dollars will be left in that fund.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay? And then the last one is, uh, adoption of residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for CBG programs. Staff recommendation is to approve this as well. Motion, Amanda and Derek? Motion, Amanda and Derek? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to eight, Reports of Committees. Items are for discussion, possible action. This is coming from the the Plan Commission. Uh, eight A one is a conditional use permit to allow personal storage facility and vehicle repair and maintenance in the general industrial zoning district at four-twenty-three North Bur Oak Avenue. The applicant is, um, at hefty construction. Plan Commission and staff recommendation is to approve. I don't thi- do we need to do anything?
Just if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions, or otherwise, we'll take a motion in a second? All right, Luke and Amanda, okay? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then relate to that is, um, uh, eight A two, Certified Survey Map at four-twenty-three North Bur Oak. Applicant again is at hefty construction. Plan Commission and staff recommendation is to approve. Take a motion in a second on this one? Mike? Is that, Mike, did I get you? Okay, Mike's got a motion, give a second, from Luke. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, these next three are one, these things, we gotta suspend the rules. We gotta do two things for each one, so, um. This is Ordinance Number Twenty-One Eighteen, General Development Plan, G D P, To Allow Plan Development Zoning at Eight Thirty-One and Eight Seventy-One, Oregon Center Drive. Applicant is Northport Development. Planning Commission Staff Recommendation. First one is, let's suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings of the ordinance, and then we'll take the motion for approval. So we get a motion in a second to suspend the rules, Amanda and Derek, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then we'll take a motion in a second. This time, we'll be approving Ordinance Number Twenty-One Eighteen. Looking for a motion in a second, Luke and Derek? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Eight A four, Ordinance Number Twenty-One Nineteen, Zoning Map Amendment For Bergamont Townhouses. For two apartments located at the corner of Jefferson Street slash County C C and Bergamont Boulevard. Applicant is Fiduciary Real Estate Development. Plan Commission Staff Recommendation. Again, first, we'll, motion is to suspend the rules and waive the first, second reading, and then we'll take the ordinance. So first, we're looking for a motion, and second, to suspend the rules? All right, Luke and Amanda, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then we'll take a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number Twenty-One Nineteen, The Zoning Map Amendment for Bergamont Townhouses, for the two properties. Amanda and Derek?
Oh, I thought, we, oh, we're doing motions, sorry. I'll do motion.
All right, so Amanda and Derek, we got a motion in a second, discussion?
Okay.
Did you have something?
I jumped the gun.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so, um, this change is about, um, that they, the planning commission was not wanting to, they were wanting to save this area for commercial, right?
In the past, yeah. Then there was a comprehensive plan amendment, um, I believe there was a joint meeting. You all have the end of June, so that changed this area, these two parcels, from, um, the planned business to the next residential designation in the comp plan. So now this rezoning would align, uh, with that comp plan change that was made a couple of months ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think the consensus was, we waited long enough. They made a concerted effort to try to attract different commercial developments. And for one reason or another, um, the, nothing ever panned out. So they came back a little bit later even than they had originally, um, been asked to come back and asked if they could make this change. And there was support for that earlier this year, so we've been moving through the.
And at least, I think it was, I think we waited years, correct?
Yeah, I mean, these have been begin for fifteen, twenty years or so. But, yeah, I think they had, the planning commission asked them to come back, like, two years later, and it'd be about four years after COVID and everything. So, um, the last step for this will be still a site plan. So we'll see that probably in the, um, winter time. But that'll just be a planning commission that won't come to the Village Board. Look very similar to the buildings that are there right now, though. Same colors, materials, all of that.
All right, anybody else, questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. One more, uh, yes, one more. Uh, eight A five, Ordinance Number Twenty-One Seventeen, Zoning Text Amendment, Amending Sections Figure Eighteen dash eight eleven one of the Vill- Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to Permanent Sign, Business Sign Group. Plan Commission Staff Recommendation is, first, we'll do the motion to suspend the rules, and then we'll take up the ordinance. So if we can get a motion in a second to suspend the rules on this. All right, Amanda and Derek, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we'll take a motion in a second, uh, for the ordinance. I don't know, do, do we need to say anything? Anybody want, everybody clear, stuff was in the packet, we're good? All right, so we'll take a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number Twenty-One Seventeen. Derek, Amanda, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are on to unfinished business, number nine. First one is the Twenty Twenty-two Municipal Budget. So we need to open the public hearing on, for this. Um, Martin, I'll just ask if anybody's here from the public who would like to speak on the budget. You're more than welcome to come up and tell us what's on your mind. So we'll take that. I don't see anything, so I'm gonna close it, close the public hearing. Um, do you wanna take, uh, Village Board? See, Village Board has any?
Yeah, the resolution's there to approve it, and, uh, yeah, if there's any comments or.
All right, anybody have any comments or anything? Are we ready to to get this one in the books? All right.
I just wanna commend the staff on another, uh, fine budget season. They, I know that the budget season never stops when you're in municipal government. As soon as you're, we put this one to bed, you're gonna be starting to project for next year. So it's an ongoing process. Um, this was a bittersweet budget for me. I mean, it funds a lot of wonderful services. And it funds a lot of wonderful work by the village staff. And we do have a fine village staff. I've been on the board for twenty years, and I think this staff at this time is better than any time I've been on the board, so. Um, and Martin, I, I love your final thoughts here. I think it's all here. I mean, you make it very obvious, um, what's in the budget, what's causing the the push and pull in the budget, and what the services are that this budget funds. Um, I don't know if it's possible to put this on the website. It might not be a bad idea for anyone that's wondering why their tax bill, uh, changed in any way. But, uh, again, it it does a lot of really, really good things. But the the one thing that caused me some heartburn was the thirty-six percent increase in total property tax level levy for debt service. And, uh, you know, the more I thought about it, it's it's kinda hard to complain as a board member because we we purchased, we we, we accumulated some debt last year, but it was all, um, for good projects. And, uh, you know, the new village hall, I mean, how could we pass that deal? The J C Park improvement, and then, of course, the new library project. And I just hope to get the, the library project, get the shovels in the ground pretty soon. Um, again, I wasn't, I wasn't happy that some people are gonna be paying a ten percent uh, property tax increase. But, uh, as much as I thought about it and tried to think of ways to get around that, there just really isn't a way to do that. Um, at least, there's not one that's obvious at this time. But, um, again, it was a whole staff project. It was a whole staff. The outcome is is all owed to the staff. Um, I don't know if there's anything in there Martin wants to highlight beyond his memo. It, uh.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, you hit it, uh, on the head there. Um, and I tried to capture it there, my final thoughts. You know, we're, we're obviously a growing community, and there's a lot of, um, um, tension with that and trying to keep things moving on the operational side and maintain our services that we provide. Um, and then, of course, we're kind of entering this phase now where we're gonna be making a huge investment in some of our public facilities, so. Um, you can see the, as Jerry pointed out, you can see the results of that and the the tax increase for, um, for debt service payments. Um, but, yeah, I, I mean, I echo Jerry's comments. The staff did a really good job. They put forth some pretty selfless budgets, I think. Um, and then, of course, I commend the board, too, for taking the time to review everything and asking good questions and having good discussion, so. It's good.
Okay.
Good outcome.
So I just wanna make co- uh, just a comment, too. I mean, I obviously wanna thank the staff, too. I mean, there's no big thrills in in the budget. I mean, we didn't, um, I I think what's happened, you all remember, we did, we did the youth center, we did the food pantry, none of that cost any, that was no public money at all, that was all private money. And so when I sort of look at this and what the the increase in our debt, what we're we're kinda doing is we're we're catching up to some things that that need to be fixed. And I think that will, that will probably continue for a couple of years. But that's kinda, that's kinda what we we're doing. I'm I'm sure none of us on this board like to raise taxes. But I think this budget is is a sort of a no thrills, nothing, there's nothing that's not needed. And this is part of, as as Martin mentioned, we're growing. And some of this stuff needs to be updated. And Jerry, you're right, that, uh, we didn't, we didn't count on the bank, but in a, in a good way, we saved, we saved millions of dollars by by doing what we did. Uh, so I I just sort of see it as a, as a catch-up, uh, on infrastructure. And, um, I'm happy with the result.
I was, too, after I thought about it for a long.
Yeah.
I wasn't happy about the increase, but.
Yeah.
That's just my issue, I guess, so.
Anybody else that's saying anything? All right, so we, um, I think we don't have a motion in a second yet.
I'll move that.
Okay, Jerry's moving, and Luke? And I think Candy, we need to do a voice vote on this one. Yes, Martin?
Yep.
Okay, Candy?
Great, Folly?
Aye.
Gliff?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Nilo?
Yes.
Lunch?
Yes.
And Stitch?
Yes.
All right, she's in the book, and now we can have our, our little treat sometime. All right, new business, we have none. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I missed, sorry, wait, wait, I missed one, sorry. We're on to be with Ordinance Twenty-One, I'm getting ahead of myself. Twenty-One Twenty, Ordinance Creating Section One Point Three-Eight of the Oregon Municipal Code Regarding the Creation of a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And Martin has a draft that was in our packet. Um, I don't know, Martin, if we need to, do we need to say anything, or are you?
Yeah, I can give just a little bit. Um, I was, I capture, tried to capture it here in my memo. Um, but taking the direction from the board at the last meeting, we have put together this, uh, draft ordinance creating what would be a Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee. Um, of course, we wanted to to expedite that because we wanna, that committee to take a look at training and and other programs for for village staff and the board members. Um, so what I did is I looked at a few different communities, um, that have created some of these, these committees, um, and tried to take what they had from there and and tried to capture what I've been hearing from Village Board members. Um, and so the ordinance is there in in the packet. Um, it talks about how the body will be composed, terms of that body, the, how vacancies are filled, the organization, and then, of course, powers and duties of it. And I did share this draft with, uh, people in the community that are interested in these topics and got a little bit of feedback. Um, so I have, you know, two policy questions in my memo there about how, uh, the board should be composed, as well as, uh, potential term limits for members. So, uh, appreciate any feedback and, um, answer any questions.
All right, anybody feed, some feedback for for Martin? Derek, looks like you have some?
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, for some of the, I've already been, I I emailed with Martin about the, uh, draft ordinance and just some of the thoughts and concerns. I'm, I, uh, brought up to him term limits. And as we go through chapters one and two, um, you'll see this is kind of a reoccurring theme of me bringing this up. And, um, I kind of posed three consecutive terms. That would give anyone who sat on the committee, uh, nine years. And then if they wanted to take a one-year break and then reapply to try and get back on the committee, that's fine. I find that just kind of helps keep a rotation of people. Um, some that I've noticed since I've been sitting up here is, I hear a lot of people that have sat on committees for twenty years, thirty years. I find it just doesn't give a whole lot of turnover for new ideas, new thoughts. So that's why I put the, uh, term limit idea out there. Um, and in the ordinance, it also has, um, allowing one member to live outside the village. Being as it is a committee within the village, I, I have my preference to just keeping it within the village, other than possibly the student member, which would be a, a member of the district. But that one, I'm a little bit more open on, but I'd love to get feedback from some of the other board members.
All right, who, who wants to speak next? Amanda, like you do, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so, um, I love the idea of having a student member on the board. I think that's great. Um, I like the idea of having everybody live in the village, though. Uh, I think that's really essential because they're making recommendations that primarily affect the the village residents. Um, it doesn't mean that I don't strongly encourage that board to, uh, get outside opinions from people. I mean, I would hope that they would, uh, be aware of, uh, you know, people from other communities, how things are done. I mean, that they're certainly welcome to invite speakers or whatever to get that outside input. I think it's valuable, but, um, I think as far as voting goes, it should just be village residents, uh, even if it's a student, I think the student should should live in the village. Um, and term limits are an intriguing idea. I'm I'm torn. Uh, I I, part of me thinks, great, turnover, yes. And part of me thinks, well, you know, uh, some people like to see projects through and and, you know, have 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 goals that are set and wanna see those come to fruition and to just kinda have someone maybe be in the middle of something and doing good work and then have to have them take that time off. I'm just saying, there's pros and cons, right? And so I'm I'm on the fence about this.
Okay, others? So the the one comment, I'll piggyback on Amanda's, um, and I think Amanda knows, I've heard you say this, too. And being on commission, sometime, sometimes it's, it's really hard to find people who wanna, will serve. That's a tough thing. Um, I do like the idea, too, of the student, student member. I think, I know sometimes that's that's kind of tough to to get. But we've had, we've had student members, and I think that's a really valuable sort of experience for them as potential future leaders to to be able to to participate. Um, so, Derek?
Yeah, just, uh, one more thing about the term limits on this. And and, you know, this might just be my opinion on this, but I think part of the reason why we might not get as many applications as we'd like for some of these boards, commissions, committees, is that people don't know that there's regular turnover on them. Um, like, tonight, we approved the vacancy for the alternate for Mark. The guy has been sitting as an alternate, from what Randy mentioned, for about seven years.
Yeah.
Before he finally got a chance to sit on that committee. If that committee had a term limit as well, he may not have had, had to necessarily sit for seven years before he had a chance. So just throwing that out there too.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I go back and forth on the term limit thing as well, but I think I kind of agree with Derek on this. Is we've had a lot of committees in this village that just have the same people on it for year after year after year after year. I'm not sure it's good for the village.
I think if this is phrased appropriately, like I have in here, for three consecutive terms, that gives someone, if they do want, and I understand being in the middle of a project and not having to take a break on it. But it does give someone at least the opportunity to come back in afterwards. I mean, it's not three terms and then you're done for the rest of your life, I mean, you can do three terms and reapply. Just take a one-year break and maybe serve on a different committee if you wanted. Again, I think part of it is just in how, how we phrase it and it's not like necessarily taking something away from someone who wants to serve twenty years. If you want to serve twenty years for the village, I think that's great. But it just gives someone else a chance to maybe just get their foot in the door.
Randy, could I?
You, you bet.
Two cents here.
Yeah.
Just, just my two cents, and I don't even know if this is an idea, Martin, but I'd be interested to see how much interest you're gonna get to begin with. I, personally, I think this committee is, it's very challenging and I think it's important to get people on there that are directly impacted by diversity, equity, and inclusion. And you know, I don't think about where we are now, but where we're gonna be in like five years. I mean, our village is growing on every end and I, you know, when I have met with the individuals that have reached out to me, my goal is to work with them in a way that allows for us to prepare for the future, to bring in more diverse, be more welcoming to it. What I fear is if you make it so, it has to be village residents, it has to be this and that and short terms and rotating, I understand that, but just a recommendation, and I don't know if this is possible, but maybe first seeing how much interest we have. I don't, what I fear may happen is we don't have a lot of diversity right now. And not a lot of people are wanting to be on committees, let's just be honest, right? And I'd hate to see this end up being a group of white people that, that wanna do work. Don't get me wrong, very intentionally, well, you know, wanna do good, but I think when you have the correct representation on this committee, whether they're people that live just outside of Oregon, but their kids go to Oregon School District, you know, whatever the case may be. I think it shows outsiders looking at, moving to our community that, hey, this, this diversity, equity, and inclusion committee is a representation of, and they're doing the work moving forward. Just my two cents, just something to consider.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Anybody else? Yeah, Luke?
I guess a question, and you know, reading this draft. Your ordinance made by the President, yes? So who's to say that somebody after three years is gonna be reapplying anyway? So do we need to have term limit language in here if in three years I could volunteer to be on the committee? And I could take place of one of the members? So I guess, just on the term limits, that's my opinion, and then I also think they need to be village residents.
Okay. Yeah, Derek?
I would, I would just say that with the term limits on there, having looked at the other ordinances from chapter one and two, that they're all listed that way. So that's, that's kinda why I thought if we get it in on the front end, along with noticing that on a lot of these committees, it's a twenty-year stint. I, I find that as we go through these ordinances, a lot of the times when they come before the board, it's been twenty years since we've looked at them again. So my thought is to write it how we want it now and twenty years from now versus coming back and potentially maybe looking at it twenty years from now, maybe? But that's, again, just my thought on that.
All right, so the question is, where do, where do, where do we want to go with this?
So current, currently the way Martin has it written, right? You, you have it so that allowing at least one member to live, no, how is it? Is it, is it, everybody has to be a resident or?
So right now, it's currently written, all members shall be residents of the village, except that one member may be a resident of the Oregon School District, not residing in the village.
Okay. So if we make any changes, it's gonna have to come back to us next week, but.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion just for part of it. I'd like to propose that we change the language so that even the student has to live in the Village of Oregon also.
Okay. So that's your only, your only change you want to make, Amanda?
For now, I just figured we'd do these separately and not tie them together.
Is there a second for Amanda's motion?
Sorry, Amanda, just to clarify a question. So you're saying you want the student to be a resident, because all the other ordinances that we have out here, just that the student seat, it just needs to be a member of the district?
So if the student is a voting member, because sometimes the student isn't a voting member, if the student's gonna be a voting member, I think they need to live in the village. If they're not gonna be a voting member, then I'm good with them being in the district, but not in the village.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Do you, you, did you address that? Or you didn't even have this?
So, yeah, the, the student member would be a full member of the committee, a full voting member, yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right, so let's, let's deal with Amanda's. We have a motion for Amanda, to, state it again, Amanda, for us, please.
I, I would like to, I vote, put the motion that we change the language in the draft ordinance so that the student member must also live within the village boundaries.
Okay. Is there a second for Amanda's emotion?
A second.
Okay, Derek, any other discussion? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I guess I don't feel strongly about that, this is an advisory committee. I think I agree with the chief on that, on, we should get people in who make the strongest committee possible and particularly a student member if they're active in schools and, and diversity and things in the schools and they're not in the area. I'm not sure that barring them actually makes this a better committee, it makes its input better. There are six other people on the committee that can vote against them if, if they bring up something crazy. And if it's crazy beyond that, the village board can vote against it. I think we should cast the net as wide as possible and bring as many ideas as possible into this committee. And as, you know, as many people that are willing to serve, we should welcome them in.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion, make sure Amanda have it right, is to have the, the student member be a, a, a village resident. And Derek, second? Okay, so let's take, yeah, Luke?
Another question here, trying to make sure we all understand this, so. As Mike just said, this is an advisory committee, so they could be voting on things to put forward to the village board, but the village board doesn't necessarily have to take that advisement under consideration.
True.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just giving clarification on that, I think I lost where my head was going.
That's all right, happens all of us.
Just for, just for clarification, we're talking about only the student member, not all of the members?
Just, right now, the motion is for a student member.
I thought all the members had to be otherwise.
Cause, cause you said student, so Amanda, you?
Yeah, I said student, but that was, I thought, it says all members, what's currently in there says all members shall be residents of the village, except that one may be a resident of the school district and not residing in the village. It doesn't even say that that's the student member. It just says one member could be outside, so now I'm thinking.
Maybe you want to restate your motion?
Well, I don't, I mean, we can.
Cause your motion did say the student.
Yeah, cause I thought that's the one that, that would not reside in the village, but the way this is worded, it just says that one member may be a resident of the school district, not residing in the village, doesn't say it's a student member, so. So, yeah, I mean, I guess my motion should have been that all members should need to reside in the village.
You, you want to restate it?
Am I, can I, can I do that?
I think, can she?
That's.
Yeah, I'm getting clarification, so.
Okay, and then Derek?
Second.
All right, so Derek is the second, Derek's okay?
Yep. Okay, so the motion is that all members be resident of the village, correct?
So we're all clear, that's what we're voting on? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, we better raise our hands.
So there's two noes?
Okay.
Yeah, Luke and Mike.
All right. Where else do we want to go? Anything else? Yeah, Derek?
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a motion for, as he has stated, for policy question number two. Term limits of not more than three consecutive terms, but allowing for someone to return after a one-year break.
Okay.
I would assume that if they returned, it would, it would keep carrying four and three, three term.
If they, yeah, if they did three more after that, then.
Okay, so they could do, they could do nine years, take a year off.
Do another nine.
Come back and do another nine if they wanted to.
Yep.
Right, okay, so that's Derek's motion. Three years, three consecutive terms, nine with a, a one-year break after that. Is there a second for that? Mike, second, okay? Discussion on that one. Any?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I was just gonna, I, I do have concerns about having enough people to fill the committees and I guess I feel like that's the, the village president's prerogative, whether they keep people on or shuffle things around and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Totally understand, but I have, I have a feeling we're gonna be having the same conversation a couple of times in the future here too.
We, we may.
Yeah.
Understood.
All right, so just for clarification again, so the motion is, is to approve the three consecutive terms, nine years total, but allowing someone to return to the committee after a one-year break. That's the motion and the second that we have on the floor. I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post?
What, I'm sorry, I got confused again. He's, to, this is to enact term limits?
This is, this is.
That are not currently, okay, okay, I'm, I'm nay.
Okay, so one, one nay? Okay, Candy, got that? One nay. All right. Anything else? Martin, was that it? Those two?
So I'll make those changes and I'll bring the draft back for the next meeting. But I assume, I mean, any, any comments on powers and duties, hopefully I captured, but we're looking forward.
It's kind of standard, or standard, yeah. We'll get another kick at this too, so. All right, we got that, so we're on to, on to ten is new business and we have none. Eleven, future agenda items, Jerry's got one.
No.
Oh. Oh, you're, you're, you're moving, you're moving ahead of me. All right, anybody have any future agenda items before, Jerry, we'll get you home soon.
I've already eaten my treats.
All right, Derek's got a question.
Just a question, question for Chief Pagankopf. Will we be adding a future agenda item for a presentation, given the earlier subject matter?
Yeah, that I don't know, because we are in an agreement with Department of Justice on, because we're an affiliate, there are restrictions on what we can and cannot talk about. So I want to make sure we're not violating those terms, number one, but then two, exposing our community to any sort of bad, I guess is the best way to put it. While I guess I want to educate our community on how we investigate these cases, I also don't want to educate the people who, you know, seek out to do these things. So I'll let Martin know and we can certainly work to see if we can make that happen.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. All right, Jerry?
Motion adjourned.
All right, can we get a second? All right, we're adjourned, everybody have good Thanksgiving.